Okay, welcome everyone to the special Public Safety Commission meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. I call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. Uh, first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a motion, please? Uh, Councilwoman Salafia, and seconded by?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Major Fico. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Matter passes unanimously. Uh, next on the agenda is the public hearing for matters on the agenda only. Uh, if anyone from the public who is wishing to speak, uh, please use the, uh, WebEx hand raise function or star three on your mobile device. I do not see anyone from the public in the queue, uh, nor on the screen, so I will close this portion of the agenda. Uh, next up is, uh, correspondence. Uh, Chief Costa, the floor is yours.
Um, we've had some, um, correspondence regards to, um, efforts with, uh, our community policing, um, normal, uh, traffic. Um, no accolades to report. Um, we did have, um, our normal, uh, business, um, chamber business. Um, dealing with a graffiti recently, which was, uh, through correspondence, um, communicating through our business owners. Um, that's been dealt with, uh, through our patrol division and, uh, taken off by, uh, I believe it was Public Works. So, um, accolades, uh, we've get a normal or responsive, you know, appreciative of our, uh, of our officers. That untimely deaths which have occurred last month was notable. Um, some were neighbors to officers that they went on their own time. Uh, to take care of those things. So, um, those are the accolades and correspondence.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Uh, next is, uh, monthly reports.
First, let's start with the overtime balance as, um, discussed last month. Um, we are in the red, um, due to, um, the pandemic and, um, uh, our units going out, um, and like last month, uh, cars in the river and those type of things. Um, we feel that, um, working with fiscal that we're gonna be able to, um, absorb a lot of that through our current budget, um, as we get closer to the end of the year. Um, through other, our other lines that, um, are contractual and, um, salaries. Um, so that, um, that will hopefully rectify itself. Um, if not, we'll make you aware that, um, as we get closer to, uh, to July first. I do understand that right now is the twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-second of June. Um, we just wanna make sure that we zero out certain accounts. And, uh, they're doing that now with our budget analyst there in the city. Our community reports, um, we've had a lot of activity in the past month, um, obviously with the Pride events, Memorial Day, and the car show. We had used, um, I had suspended days off, um, on those dates to ensure coverage for the city, not just the event itself, but for the rest of the city for calls of service. Um, I wanna say thank you to, uh, and I'm extremely proud of this agency and our officers, um, understanding that need and having little, uh, to no pushback, regards, um, accepting, uh, that decision that, uh, that I had to make. Um, I would like to let you thank the thirteen sixty-one union body and executive board for understanding as well and working with me and the command staff to ensure that, that those events went off as safely as possible. And, um, their management and organization through that was outstanding, um, especially, uh, Pete Pesakis, who's our officer in traffic, who, um, plans at all of these events for our officers and develops the command posts and, and things that are needed and, uh, is the bridge to, um, the event organizers. Um, the car show, um, was something that we had a lot of, um, participants. A, a great showing. I'm sure the chamber is extremely excited by all the events, but the car show, um, uh, we had to turn cars away because they were out too late and we felt terrible about that, but it became so packed on the main street that, um, it became a safety issue to move some of the high-end cars, uh, into position. So they had to park unfortunately into, uh, the side streets. And I know moving forward next year, that's going to be something that we'll have to speak with organizers about, about, um, making the event maybe bigger to accommodate, um, those arrivals, um, as they come in. I wanna move down, uh, we're going, I know in, on our agenda, in old business, we talk, we're gonna be talking, speaking about CIT and in new business, uh, the school resource officers. So I'm gonna hold off on those when it comes to the community report because I think those are the things that we need to discuss at those times. Um, to move down, so I'm gonna skip down to incidents, uh, stats report. Um, our numbers are pretty much, um, the same, thirty-eight hundred calls of service, uh, in totality. Uh, but there's some things I would want to bring up. Uh, one is the CIT, uh, thirty-one calls of service that they responded to while on duty. Uh, twenty reports, uh, that were forwarded to them off hours. Um, and then twenty-two, uh, follow-ups to, um, the fifty calls of service, basically the fifty-one calls of service. The twenty, twenty-two follow-ups that needed the follow-up. Um, we are seeing an, an impact to calls of service. Um, when it comes to, um, what we call our consistent or, or, um, frequent flyers, when it comes to those who need, um, our services or looking for stakeholders in the community to provide services. Uh, we're definitely seeing a change in that. Um, a lot of that has to do with, uh, their ability to get housing for a lot of our homeless, uh, population and to, um, again, get, um, working with other stakeholders and private vendors for, um, mental health services and providers. So we're definitely seeing that change. Um, one thing I definitely want to start to bring to fruition is, or acknowledge about and, and start talking about it is our animal control issue in, in the city. Um, last month alone, our animal control had two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty calls for service. Um, we currently have, um, about ten dogs, twelve cats. We have a lot of, of animals, um, that we're holding in our, um, our location down, um, off of Newfield Street. Um, there are two full-time positions, one part-time position, they are straight out. We had an incident on our Apollo app which we seized over like thirty animals. Um, so, um, it's, uh, it's a unit that we don't, um, talk much about. It, it's one of those, um, needs, um, that are kind of, uh, we're blind to on sometimes. And, um, I know they work extremely hard. Um, and I know it's a program that needs support. Um, it does do a lot. We have a lot of incidents that deal with dog bites to unwanted pets, um, and, and working, um, the, uh, a program to, um, adoption. So they do a lot for us and, um, I just wanna make that note that we might have to look to, um, adding that part-time position to a full-time position into the next fiscal year. Uh, or maybe even sooner if need be because of, uh, the, the work that goes into it. And, uh, two hundred and thirty, uh, calls of service, all these, they do also doing arrest warrants and, um, giving out infractions. So, um, this is involved work. Is this not, um, go to the call, deal with the call and move on? These are a lot of things that take a lot of time, hours, um, reporting, um, when it comes to managing these animals, uh, in our city. So, and it can become a public, um, issue as, uh, these things tend to, um, ramp up when the economy goes south. So, um, we're worried about that as well.
Chief, can I just, uh, ask two quick questions?
Sure.
Uh, as far as the incident reporting, you said the CIT, they had thirty, thirty calls and twenty of those were reported to CIT?
Thirty-one calls while they're on duty, when they're here in the building, which is, uh, the Monday through Friday, um, hours. But the twenty calls are when they're not here. So those twenty calls are from, uh, we send people to the emergency room. Um, and they will follow up with them, uh, with those twenty calls, um, the next day or when they come in or over the weekend. And then the twenty-two calls of follow-up is that there are, out of those fifty-one calls, uh, twenty-two calls were followed up on, uh, like for resources or stakeholders to, um, assist those people after the fact.
And is that, is that reflected on the incident statistic report at all?
It's not because we're having a problem getting that, that data. So we're doing it independent.
Okay. Is, is there any way you could, however, that comes out as just an additional report separate to that? I'd really like to track how well that, that program is working and how it differentiates between. Cause what I'm seeing here is I'm seeing, uh, on the incident statistical report suicides threatening at twenty-six. It would be nice to know if that, if those calls, actually some of those calls went to CIT at all or if they were separate at all, just how that program is working.
What we're finding is our communications, because communication is a separate entity from us.
Okay.
Um, the classification of the, for lack of better terms, the emotionally disturbed persons, uh, that sometimes get unclassified into suspicious incidents or, uh, a police assists or a medical assists or. And so those, those are why the numbers are getting skewed in, in our next system on that call typing that you see.
Okay.
So that's an issue we're trying to work through, but the number of calls we get per month, um, the oversight is on the, falls on the officer. And, um, like anything else, it's, it's a work in progress and, and should that data point. So that's why we're doing it independently at this point until we clean that up.
Okay. Uh, you have here suicide, uh, suicide attempt and then a parentheses of F. Could you just let me know what the F stands for? Do you know? Is it? On the incident statistical report?
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, suicide F.
On page three.
Female.
Uh, okay. That's what I thought. And, um, going back to what you were talking about, uh, as far as animal control. Is there any, um, programs that would help assist with, um, uh, with the amount of animals, like when we seize, you know, the large amount of animals that were in control of where you get it? Where we either get grant funding or additional help or, uh, funding from the state or anything like that?
Right. So this is one of those programs that the, uh, the offices that are involved are always looking for grants. They get a lot of, um, a lot of the grants are to be able to feed the animals when they're in our care. Um, a lot of grants don't work towards subsidizing manpower, but they do go into subsidizing, um, uh, buying, uh, which we do have, uh, materials supply. Uh, we could partner with our local, um, region to, for space or to assist, a lot of times to assist them because they're smaller than we are, um, like Portland's and East Hamptons and those. But we work with their ACOs as well that help us, um, deal with some of the issues that we, we face as well. So.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
And that's all I have for our monthly reports unless questions, concerns, issues.
Okay. Um, nope, I don't think, I think I'm the only one with questions today. Uh, all right, moving to the next, next agenda item, old business and CIT.
Oh, it's River, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, River Valley Services has given us Kristen, um, who, uh, was a liaison for River Valley Services. She is now full-time with us. So Chris has left and moved on back to his original role with River Valley Services. So we have one person committed to the city. Um, we're excited to have her. She comes with a, a wealth of experience and, uh, networking. Um, when it comes to the community, she's also a, a Melaton resident. Um, so, um, congrats to her for being with us. Um, speaking with, uh, Celeste, uh, who, uh, is moving on as well to, uh, a bigger role within Demus. Um, I think that's going to be, um, a, a good scenario for us and support from the state to maintain the CIT position. Um, we're hoping, uh, moving forward, um, they have just hired a midnight shift CIT, um, mobile crisis worker. Um, we're hoping that, uh, that worker, uh, because they're based in Melaton, will have a little bit more influence in the city and our, on our backend on the overnight hours. So we're looking forward to that as well. Um, so that's, um, that's where our CIT, CIT is right now. Um, with that being said, um, we are starting, uh, a project called, uh, Police Social Worker Project. Uh, we're partnering with Eastern Connecticut State University. We're bringing in an intern, um, who currently works for River, River Valley Services and is working towards, um, their master's uh, degree in, in social work, uh, with a concentration to the police social work. Um, so they'll be working with our CIT, um, doing a lot of things we just talked about, maybe, uh, the follow-up end of it. Um, providing services, um, working with, uh, opioid addiction, um, the soup kitchens, the homeless. So it, it's a great project that has good guidelines. So we'll be working with them, um, molding and getting, uh, our, um, job description down for what we are looking for and a new fiscal year for our new positions opening up. Um, so this is a great beginning, uh, for the social worker piece. Um, cause once we have our two full-time social workers onboard, uh, we'll continue with the project, which will give us a third. Um, a lot of these, um, interns coming with already social work experience and working in the field. So they're not coming in as new students. These are people, individuals who are in the, in the business and have experience. So it's a positive and, you know, it's an economically, it's a free person, um, doing the job. So it, it works out really well. Um, and it's a positive, so.
So, so Chief, just to make sure I have this right, we'll have two full-time social workers, part of the program. We'll have two CIT connections with River Valley Services and an intern?
And an intern program, correct.
Okay.
Um, the two, the CIT overnight is a mobile crisis. So they cover all of Middlesex County. But most of the work will be done in the city, um, knowing my past experience with Middlesex County. But we'll have, well, hopefully we have that influence here.
But they're available, they, they will be available for us.
Absolutely, which is now.
Excellent. Okay.
We're working with the two-on-one system to provide after-hours services as well. Um, we're open to dedicate down the road a police line for two-on-one. So we get better service when it comes to, um, um, suicide hotlines to, um, other housing resources, um, COVID, um, so they're working on that as well.
Thank you, Chief. And, uh, new business?
New business. So, and, uh, start off with part A is the school resource officers. Um, as many of you may have known, um, we were currently at three SROs, two in the high school. We had one in Beeman Middle School. We, um, in light of the incidents, uh, across our nation, um, we had increased our SRO program to six, which it was originally at the beginning of the school year based on retirements and movement that, uh, that had moved down to end funding, um, and moved on to three. Um, we are currently at six. Obviously, the school year is coming to an end. Those six resource officers will return back to patrol staffing. Um, but going into the new fiscal year, uh, and into the new school year, um, we are looking to, um, look at that program again. I do have a upcoming meeting with the school superintendent in regards to what's the best service, um, for the schools. Um, when it comes to SROs, um, these are positions that are fully funded by the police department. Um, the six SROs, um, again, not having the backing of the finance department for exact numbers, but we're somewhere in the range of seven hundred thousand dollars of the police budget to supply SROs to the schools, uh, which I have no problem doing, um, on the backend. Uh, that's some of the reason why we're in the red in our overtime budgets, um, because of lack of staffing on, on the roadside uh, and our minimum manpower requirements to patrol staffing, which is also very needed, uh, due to the call, the rates of calls in the city. So it's a balancing act really. That's what it comes down to. And, uh, we're just gonna try to find out what the, the sweet spot is going into the, the new school year of what, um, we should have for school resource officers where it's physically responsible and, um, appropriate for the city and the schools to ensure our safety.
Councilwoman Salafia.
Can you just remind me how many police officers we have and how many we're supposed to have and how many you'd like to have?
Well, we'll start with what we have. We currently are at a hundred and fifteen police officers. Um, come, we're at a hundred and fifteen police officers. We are slated after July one to have a hundred and seventeen. The hundred and seventeen, uh, I apologize. We're slated right now on paper to have a hundred and sixteen. We're at a hundred and fifteen in uniform, uh, at work here. Um, so after July first, we'll be at a hundred and seventeen with a new captain position, uh, for Community Services Division. That'll bring us to one seventeen. If we, if we filled all of our depart, all of our services here in the department to full staffing, we should be at a hundred and twenty, which we not.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought was the, uh, the goal was a hundred and twenty. And we were supposed to be, I don't know how far back this go, like hiring two police officers every year until we got to a hundred and twenty. And a hundred and twenty was supposed to be like a minimum.
All right, we should be, uh, one twenty-five would cover the six SROs in the schools. When that, when that was what you're saying, you're absolutely right. Um, the one twenty-five was the, was the optimal number with the school resource officers being at six.
Yep. Do you know offhand if you have any, uh, retirements coming up in the coming year that you?
So currently the thirteen sixty-one is negotiations with the city. I'm expecting a minimum of three to retire.
How many?
Three.
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 But yeah, there's many that are more than able to.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you have a, you have a turnover. That's
It's by the business.
That's, yeah, that's unlike those of us in the office staff who could sit there all day. Thanks.
Councilman Major Fico.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, Chief Costa, I wanna just thank you and your entire department as well as our amazing fire department for the excellent job that you've done this past month between the car show, Pride Fest, the Memorial Day parades. Um, you've been very busy and I think we've had a lot of people come out for all those events and everyone's felt very safe. Everything has felt very organized. So just thank you to both of you and to your departments. Um, it's just really great to see people on the streets having a good time and finally socializing with each other. Um, Chief, in terms, in terms of the SROs, can you tell me where those six are based?
Um, they are two at the high school, two, uh, two at the high school, one at the middle school. Three, um, are, the, the three split up the nine elementary schools in the city. Each officer has three schools. And there's nine, there's nine elementary schools. So, um, they visit those schools, uh, with a staggered pattern.
Okay. And do you know how much it would cost roughly to have one SRO at every single school all the time?
I would pretty, uh, estimate off the top of my head around nine hundred thousand.
Okay. Is that something that you would support if you had funding for it?
Of course I would.
Okay. Uh, I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously we're all on edge with what's happened in Texas and, uh, you know, uh, in Buffalo and other places, but especially with our schools, trying to figure out what the best way to keep our students safe. Um, so do you think having an SRO at every single school is the best way to keep our students safe? Or do you have any other ways that we can do that?
Well, I think there is like, with what you just said in regards to putting an SRO at every school, that would be, um, the safest way we can conduct business in theory. Um, the committed person being involved in my prior profession, the Connecticut State Police in tragedy in Sandy Hook, um, the committed person's the committed person when it comes to these tragedies. Um, the thing is, is that, um, we try to minimize the risk. By minimizing the risks is having well-trained, uh, people, well-trained and educated people on those positions. So in crisis situations, they react appropriately and did the best interests of all involved. Um, so I think in my opinion, my opinion, investment in that school resource officer position, um, is either an all-in or, or you have to look for alternatives, whether the school hires, um, retirees to, um, armed guards, uh, through a private faction. But, um, to ensure quality, uh, training and, uh, in alignment with the city, I think best practice would be have a full active SRO program. Uh, but is it, it, I'm not gonna delay, it is an expensive thing. An average officer is somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, give or take. Um, again, I don't, it's, like, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but working, um, with the current situation, um, our numbers are around six hundred and eighty-one thousand that we currently have involved, um, with the six officers. So to add another three for you, you apply really close to a million dollars, um, in totality. Uh, that's off the top of my head though.
Okay. And last question, in most districts, is that cost entirely on the police department? Or is that shared between the police department and the school district? Or the Board of Ed, I should say?
The SRO program is usually, it falls upon the police department as a community resource program. Um, as part of, uh, community initiatives. Uh, most of the communities are like that. Those that are not like that are hiring a Board of Education position, uh, for security. So it'd be, uh, someone that's hired by the Board of Ed.
All right. Thank you, Chief, and I'm looking forward to hearing, um, the outcome of your conversation with the new superintendent, whenever that is.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Salafia.
I just wanna throw it, uh, part of the cost that when you have a city employee is, uh, the benefits. And they're usually minimum, uh, thirty, forty thousand dollars for health insurance. Uh, we, we don't pay unemployment, uh, to the state, but the other benefits that are involved in that, that's that's part of the catch that we need to.
And it's a ten-month position, um, but, uh, a lot of the SRO programs, um, that work year-round support the camps at the schools and recreation programs that occur at the schools as well. But she's absolutely right. There is the fringe benefit side of the house.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, there's no other questions, uh, on that part, Chief. You could go ahead, continue with Pride.
Pride program, um, I thought was the Pride event. Um, we have established, um, consistency in our meetings, um, since, uh, coming into my new role, um, Captain Lozowski and Pete Pesakis, um, um, have been, uh, on that board since I, um, have been involved with other things. But I, I take time to try to go to the, uh, as many of those meetings as I can. Um, I thought that was an impressive, um, community involvement when it comes to Pride and the way it was established. Um, I thought that was, uh, something that we can build upon, um, and going into next year. Um, so, um, I thought it was an excellent, uh, community altogether. Um, our PAL program, uh, which is item C, um, we have three movie nights coming up.
Hello.
Uh, the first movie night, uh, had four involved.
Uh, I have to go with Tom.
Hold on one second. Okay, she muted herself. Go ahead.
Um, we have, uh, another, uh, movie make, movie night coming up with the Minions, uh, which is a popular one for our younger crowd. Uh, we're already almost at max for that, uh, for that movie night. Um, on June twenty-seventh, we started our basketball league, um, with the rec department at, at, um, McDonough School. Um, so we're excited about that. Um, we have been part of the Chamber of Commerce, um, getting, trying to get donations uh, into PAL to run these programs, these movie nights. Um, we have people committed for, uh, music lessons. And, uh, we also have, um, a ping-pong league, um, that's, uh, in the works to start as well. And King Pong on Court Street. Um, they're going, also doing an event for PAL, uh, to start that as well. So, uh, PAL is underway and, um, there's, uh, the, the good, great community involvement. Our board is stacked with, um, a lot of talent, uh, from, uh, the community as well as internally. And, uh, I know our offices are extremely excited about it. Um, RBI, uh, part D, uh, letter D, RBI is the function. Um, we, Captain De Senna and Lieutenant Hubs have been involved with Next Gen, um, developing that program. They're working out the kinks so it fits us and Next Gen. Um, once we get that locked down and our command staff on that, we're going to start the project to bring it onto our, um, our website, city website. So our citizens can, uh, run statistics, um, media can run statistics, um, whatever they may need. Um, that's, um, a big piece. Um, it's, it's, uh, a hard lift to get that, the systems working to identify our data points that we need forward-facing. So it's that talking piece that we're trying to work out some of the bugs. It's a process, uh, more than we, I expected. Um, so we're working on, on that as well. Um, and I just wanna jump back real quick about the accountability, uh, bill update. Um, body one cameras, we, uh, ordered five more for command staff. So the chief of police on down will have a body one camera. Um, our cameras in the car for patrol are all, um, installed. Um, our accreditation manager process, we are, um, have closed the process. We are now processing, uh, well, human resources is processing the applications. Uh, we had six applicants, so I have no idea at this point who they are. Uh, HR will identify the qualified candidates and move them forward. So we're hoping that, that will be done, um, by the end of July. We'll have them in place. Um, we do have, uh, signed officially with CLIA. We are going to be a CLIA accredited agency, which is the gold standard in the nation. There's no better, um, certification you can have, um, for standard. There's no better certification you can have for standardization of police practices in the country. That'll be in alignment with the Connecticut State Police and other larger agencies in our state being Kalia certified. So that's a great thing for the city and for this department. And that, without any other questions or concerns, that's my report from the Melton Police Department.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Costa? No? All right. Excellent. All right. So then I will reopen the public hearing portion of the agenda for matters other than what is on the agenda. So if anyone is from the public who wishes to speak, please use the hand raised function on the webex or use star three on your mobile device. Remember to state your name and your address, and please try to keep your comments under five minutes. I do see folks in the public section, but no one is raising their hand at this time. All right. So I will close this section of the agenda. And if there is no other business, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Slavia, thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. Double second by Councilwoman Carter and Councilman Medjafico. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You guys just aren't fast enough.
You are kind of quick tonight.
By the way, I just got tomorrow off.
Oh, no wonder.
That's what that phone call was. It was either two kids or no kids, and I got no kids.
Awesome. All right.
I have two I can drop off.
There you go. So you just said publicly, you're free. It's on the record. All right. Thank you so much, chief. You have a great evening.
Enjoy.
All right. Bye. All right. Let me get my agenda up. Oh, man. Right.